Susie Roehl, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Here.
And Mayor Hore.
Here.
Uh, work session agenda approval.
So moved.
Or discussion.
Yeah, we have it here.
Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Mayor Hore.
Yes.
Any comments or items on the agenda? All right, Michael, you're up. Presentation of the 2023-24 budget.
I'm gonna stand for this.
Only out of the council.
I guess that can be him to you.
I already told you.
He's cocky.
All right, I'm gonna just kinda highlight my budget memo I sent you. You're not gonna read it verbatim, but I'm gonna kinda highlight it. Um, just some of the things that, that are coming out of it. So, um, you know, we've come out of the COVID-19 pandemic, and over the last year, we've served, we've obviously are seeing dramatic issues pertaining to inflation, um, the conflict in Ukraine, where we really don't know what to expect going forward. But, um, I think we prepared a pretty good budget to, you know, put us going forward and keep us in good shape. From the past year, we saw approximately a $15 million increase in taxable value of real property across the city. This has resulted in a modest increase in our real property tax revenue to the general fund of about $117,000. A large portion of this did go to the Downtown Development Authority due to the adult marijuana facilities. Something negative of this, though, is we are starting to see a heavily limit roll back due to the increasing, heavily increasing property values and revenues. When I came here in 2016, our headless limit was 17.2 mils, meaning we had the ability to increase our milage rate to that amount without a vote of the people. Our headly limit now is about 16.28 mils. And I anticipate at some point, our current milage rate is gonna be rolled back due to increasing taxable values, but that's not this year. The city also received its third excise payment this year for excise tax payment from marijuana retail facilities. The payment we received is dependent on the number of facilities we have. The $362,888.47 we received was immediately transferred to the local street fund to alleviate costs for road projects. I should also note, the DDA received $54,600 more in property taxes than budgeted for, um, and then this year, the DDA actually anticipates an additional $95,000 more than they received this current fiscal year. I'm not gonna get really get into the employment, healthcare, retirement. We've talked about that ad nauseam. However, I will say that I'm not really looking forward to the actuarial this year when we get it from MERS because the stock market's not doing that well. And we'll see, hopefully, we don't drop much from 67% funded down, and I won't know that until June. Staffing, um, we've not, there's no loss to, to our full-time staff. There's no additions to our full-time staff. We are gonna have one, one retirement upcoming. Dan's gonna be retiring at the end of the summer. Um, last year, we budgeted. Yeah. Well, a bit of a summer.
He started shaking his head.
Yeah, I forgot.
Dan's checking it out on the camera under.
We did budget for apartheid code enforcement officer, but we never filled the position. One, because we didn't have a vehicle for him. I chose not to add this position because I do believe we are very close to funding a seventh full-time officer next year. And the funding we would use for this position would be needed for that additional officer. I'd rather wait to see how that plays out before reinstituting the code enforcement position. The police departments can handle it. They've been doing, they've been doing fine with it. So, I didn't look forward to that. So... For the 2023-24 budget, we're gonna see an increase of about $117,366 to the general fund. As you know, the, the general fund for several years has charged the other funds for administrative services, which are in essence administrative service costs that are charged facility, city facility usage along with city staff. We're still gonna do that. Uh, I am projecting $250,000 for our res, our share of the marijuana excise tax. I always go very conservative with that number. Um, and I, and so I, I projected that amount. I'm also projecting $60,000 in our annual marijuana facility application fees. And I'm projecting a $30,000 increase to the local power pilot from what was anticipated from last year. Same as last year, the, uh, the, the city hall bond payment will occur from the Downtown Development Authority. This freed up about $150,000 out of the general fund. And we were able to, uh, we were able, that allowed us to make an appropriation of $400,000 to local streets. This is actually a $100,000 increase budgeted from the previous fiscal year. This year, we will make no, no contribution to the equipment fund to stabilize it. This is the second time in several years we didn't need to do this. City will also be making budget expenditures to the fire, lower area fire services authority that's consistent with our agreement. We anticipate a contribution of $181,417. Two years ago, we created a separate fund for future fire capital expenses, and we plan to allocate $25,000 annually for future fire truck purchase.
I did have a question regarding the equipment fund.
Yes.
Later in the report, you show that you need a couple of vehicles.
Yes.
And so, is that all really budgeted out of a different?
It's all in the equipment fund.
It comes out of that, so you have nothing there?
Yeah, so, yeah, well.
Okay.
Basically, what happened was for many years, part of the issue was, we weren't, we weren't properly, in basically the way the equipment fund works, is we chart, like, if we use equipment, the state charges a fee for that equipment. It's called equipment rental fees, as the state of Michigan sets it. For many years, that was always, staff had a hard time tracking that. And, and before I arrived, there were actually deficits to that fund, where we always had to have the general fund basically come in and supplement it because you can never, you can't have a fund run in deficit. So, um, first, let's say, first four years I was here, we made a contribution every year. But the staff has gotten a lot better at tracking rentals and, um, equipment rentals, and it's allowed us, and basically what I tell the, tell the staff is, DPW staff is, if you don't properly fill out your forms, I can't buy equipment. So, they've done a very good job of, of doing what, and of tracking things the way it needs to be done. And it's now, it's put us in a situation where we're, you know, we're being able to stabilize that fund, and we don't need to, we can basically subsidize it from the revenues that we generate through Schedule I.
So, thanks.
Yep, nope. This fiscal year, we're gonna construct multiple streets. Last year, we paved G Drive from Alden National Foreman Church, Faith, High Ground, Reverta, Jane, Valley Vista, from Bowes Road to Main Street. This year, we're planning to pave Grindel and Shepherd Drive. Also, we are budgeting over the next two years for all the cross streets from Lafayette to Jefferson, from Front Street to Fremont when Monroe and Washington are complete. Um, in addition, obviously, we're gonna be working on is the Monroe and Washington Street project. We're gonna be planning the Monroe Street here, um, in June, and with, with, and we're working on Washington for next year. Those are over $7 million in, in projects, and obviously, they're gonna be funded by the USDA Rural Development Program. This year, um, we water sewer rates based off of our analysis from the USDA and SAW. We are gonna increase the res, we are proposing to increase the residential customer ready-to-serve charge for sewer by $1.90 or 7%. We're also recommending a .31 increase to the sewer consumption charge. That's a 7% increase for the water. We're looking at a .27 increase on the, on the monthly ready-to-serve charge for water, with a, which is equivalent to 1%, and a 3% increase to the consumption charge for water. And, uh, this, this is, uh, based off of the analysis we received from our, from, well, from both the SAW grant and our USDA financing. Just kept the projections for the, well, basically, I'll go, I'll go over them. So, this year, we're, for the end of this fiscal year, on paper, it's gonna show a negative variance where expenditures exceeded revenues by $148,000. This is due to us making our payments, with the fund balance payments towards our pension liability and our local, uh, street fund transfer. When we, when we get the audit back and we get the extra funds, we, we basically, it goes into the fund balance, but it gets tracked as an expenditure for this fiscal year. So, actually, even though it'll ship, it'll project to be $148,000 less, we'll actually, we're actually projected to add an additional $50,000 to fund balance because we were really, we were originally projecting, we had $200,000 of expenditures, um, that we had to make. So, basically, the way our budget ties out, it, we, we'll actually, even though on paper, it looks like we, we exceeded revenues, or exceeded the expenditure over average, which we did, it was because we used fund balance to, to pay down onto the pension and the, and the, um, and the local streets. But we're actually gaining $50,000, um, to the, to the fund balance, so, um, so there's that. So, for the upcoming fiscal year, uh, or for the, for the upcoming fiscal year budget, as you know, we can levy up to 20, well, our charter is 20 mils. However, as I mentioned with Headley, we're, we're only up, the maximum amount, we're allowed to levy a 16.281, 81 mils. And this year, we're levying 15.7 mils, which is the same we've done since I've been here. And, uh, it was, the, the budget was, was developed using the following assumptions. Revenue is, uh, the military rate is 15.7 mils. We utilize the constitutional state revenue sharing and Act 51 gas tax collected by, calculated according to the Michigan Department of Management and Budget Projections. We're seeing actually significant increases in our interest rates, um, you know, on our, on our money that we, on our pooled revenue. And we're still looking to remain the same with services and improve our efficiency. For the upcoming fiscal year, for the general fund, we're, we're projecting $4,074,577.47. This is actually a hundred, approximately $172,000 more than originally projected this fiscal year. Our projected revenue for the upcoming fiscal year will come in at $4,072.60, actually, $4,072,064.40. This is actually about $2,500 less than projected for the current, when we project, for the current fiscal year. The reason it's less is because we conservatively estimate marijuana excise revenue and don't know how much we'll receive until March or February next year. But, um, so that's how we do that. Budgeted expenditures for the, uh, general fund for the upcoming fiscal year are expected to be $4,008,797.99. This is actually $214,000 less than projected for the current fiscal year. Of the actual general fund revenue, approximately 17.7% or $722,768 of general fund expenditures will be transferred to other funds to subsidize their expenses. The main one is local streets. And I have those spelled out. I don't, I don't know if I need to go through all those, but we will go through them during, during session. But in the upcoming budget, we are, we are proposing between all of our funds across the city, we're, we're proposing $5.4 million in civic and infrastructure improvements in the city. The city, in regards to city funds, all are in good condition. The DDA is in, is in good long-term condition and is committed to revitalizing the downtown area. The DDA fund has been able to alleviate the general fund. Some expenditures mainly addressing streets in the district along with some other capital improvements to some of our facilities, um, in the downtown district. So, for the upcoming fiscal year, I'm recommending the following. I'm maintain, I'm recommending that the city council maintain the current milage and collect 15.7 mils for fiscal year 23-24. As I said before, you have the ability to increase the milage rate to 16.281 mils without a vote of the people as a result of the Headley rollback. If you went beyond that, you would have to, you would have to go to the vote of the people for a charter limit, uh, to go to the charm, to the charter limit. The budget as presented reflects the revenues expenditures to balance the budget and provide public services. Overall, city services will remain the same but are offset by administrative service charges from other funds to assist with administrative costs for providing services. That being said, city will continue to evaluate strategies for generating revenue to replace local streets and underground infrastructure, and will continue to use additional technology and changing our work procedures where we can to lead for financial efficiencies. I wanna thank the entire staff for their work on the budget, our department heads. A lot of our staff was involved in this process. I do wanna thank Sue Olin and Janelle Delcamp. They did an outstanding job. This is obviously Janelle's first budget, um, and it's been, and it's been, uh, we've been very busy for the last month and a half. But, um, looking forward to discussing the budget with you in full tonight. So, just so also, just so you know, if you look around at page nine, I break down, I start, I do an analysis breakdown of where our funds come from. Property taxes are only 43% of all the general fund revenue we receive. It's about $1.7 million of the $4 million. Our second biggest revenue is, is sales tax, uh, through state revenue sharing, which we're actually projecting quite a bit of an increase this year on. The other, the other big one is the low light power, uh, low light power pilot. That's close to 11% of our budget. And then if you break down some of the other stuff, like the DDA transfer, that's just to pay the bond. And then, um, the marijuana excise tax, as you know, I low, I conservatively budget that. It normally comes in higher every year. We just take that money and transfer it to local streets. And then if you break it down by how we spend our money, almost 25% of our budget is police, um, for general fund. And then, um, the, the next biggest expenditure actually is the local street transfer. And then, um, after that, public works, and then city hall costs. And we break it down by service, but that, that breaks it down. But then also, ultimately, our biggest, our biggest expenditure is personnel. I mean, that's the first, we're, I mean, we really are a service-related industry. Yeah, half our, and we're not, we're not like any other city. Probably half your budgeted expenditure is gonna be in personnel. I don't care what city you're in.
Did you budget more for elections?
We will talk about it. Yes, we did. Oh, yeah, we did.
And what are we still paying to the show vote, even though it's 22%? I thought we separated.
There's some, there's some DPW work that still gets done there. So, we do, we do just put a little aside just for that. But no, we're not, we're not subsidizing. But if there's things that need, like, what, you know, pertaining to, like, when it's on shore or something.
Easier for them to just do it?
We just do it, yeah. So, we've always, we've always done that.
Mike, I, I did have something back.
Sure.
This is on the 15.7 mils. Even though we can go up to 16.281 earlier, you said you might, we might see a reduction again. And that, is there ever a time that, that we may go below the 15.7 and have to make adjustments as well?
So, what hap, so what happens, what happens? Yes, it is a good question. So, the reason the milage rate would reduce is because your, um, your, your taxable value is above the rate of inflation. We've seen over the last couple of years, we've seen significant increases in, in, in property values across the city. That lowers our, that lowers our, our military. That's, that's, that was a stipulation under the Headley amendment back in the 1970s. The other, the other stipulation was when, when Proposal A came into place in 1994, you could only go, you could only go, um, you can, your, your, and your revenue could only increase, or your taxable value could only increase 5% of the rate of inflation, which is ever less. This is the first year since Proposal A has been put in place that we are seeing a 5%. You're usually, on average, you're seeing about 2.2% a year across, every year since Proposal A. Our, our, we're, we're, like I said, when I first came here, our Headley amendment, our Headley limit was 17.2 mils. And we've dropped a mil in almost seven years. And it's tied to the fact that actually, because we're actually doing well. And when you have significant property values, forces the, it forces the milage to roll back. And so, I do think eventually, that 15.7 is going to, we're gonna be forced to go under 15.7. We're gonna have to. But the, the nexus is, is that because we're generating more taxable value, we shouldn't be losing revenue per se. It's just the ability to collect additional revenue. We're very, it's very, it's, it's very restricted on how we can, how we can, um, do it. So, yeah, that's basically, in a nutshell, what it is. Thank you much. Yep. So, um, start with Dan. He's, he was excited because this is the first time in all his years he went to work.
I used to go at all these last, and everybody's tired of playing here with the dogs. Okay, well, for myself, the items I worked on, started on page, uh, the general fund, city hall items. It's page 28. We have some dollars put aside for, for work around the building, for repair and maintenance and such. The big thing, as you get into the building improvements for this coming year, the, we have some issues with the plumbing on the outwater, especially for the ladies room and the men's bathroom. We're trying to get back, we're gonna take care of that. And then, uh, Mike's put some money inside for, just to work on the building.
Yes.
The other items within the, um, city hall budget are pretty consistent for these spending in the past. And there's just, then the next item would be cemetery. Again, uh, operating supplies, a slight increase for that. And, uh, one thing we're trying to do between Sue and myself and, and the staff at the cemetery is up, uh, get all the, all the records updated to where they need to be. I don't know if you get into city hall in the mornings. Nancy from up at the cemetery this winter spent some time in the city hall. Going through all the files, because, I mean, everybody puts their hands in it for different things. In the first time I've been here, there's been several of us that have been poking around the files, looking for information, putting information in there. And with Nancy Roth, and I'm sure you know who Nancy is, with the post office, she knows everybody, it seems like. She'll pick up a piece of paper, look at it, says, "Well, that's not right." She runs out to cemetery, figures it out, comes back, and straightens it out, which I, it's been a help so far. And I think it's gonna be a bigger help down the road as, as people leave the city, new people come in as far as working the files and having a better understanding of what's there. So, I give Nancy a lot of credit and Sue for, uh, having, um, having the stuff being taken care of. Because I'm sure it's helping Sue to get past all that paperwork that's involved. There's like four files, you, four different files you have to fill out for, for his funeral or something like that.
Yes, yes.
You got the book, you got the card catalog, you got the file itself, you got the information you send off. It's, it's a lot of work just to bury somebody.
Yeah.
So, and they were doing a good job on it. And it's really helpful, trying to get the records. The records at city hall are the official records. We have records at the cemetery too, which is helpful when people show up, but they're not the official records. So, we're trying to make sure that the ones at the cemetery match what's at the city hall here so that, um, when people show up, we can just help, better service, something, help them find a spot or help.
Is there a way to digitize it all, so it's all one system? You know what I mean? Like, if Nancy's up there, she can, does she have a computer and everything?
We do, we have stuff up there, but to, but to bring it all together and digitalize it for what we need, I think would be pretty difficult. But we do, there's information online through the, our GIS system where you can look it up. But the actual official records are all still by my hand. And I know there's places that have gone digital, gone electronic. It's still a lot of work to make sure to keep that up. It's like everything else. The data that you're giving people is only as good as what you put into it. And again, with, with having some time this winter and having somebody that understands the cemetery really well, I think it's been very helpful to get that information corrected and updated, so.
I had a little trouble understanding all the, the fees that were associated with burying somebody in the times and the dates and not this day, that day, weekend. So, that to me was pretty confusing. Not that you have to do anything, but I was, just got confused.
Most people get buried up there and complain they have to pay.
They have nothing to complain about.
No, I think, I think when you look at that, though, if you were just to, actually, if you were to compare that to other communities, it's all, it's all basically run the same. You got the fee for, for buying, uh, a place to be buried in, to, a fee open, and there's, depending on what day of the week, and weekends versus during the week, and.
I'm just trying to say it. I mean, I'm on a lap path in my life at an early age, so.
Maybe we should come up with a plan where you can pay in advance. And then it don't matter what day.
Yeah, that's true.
Something like that. Yeah, again, with the cemetery, though, there's been a lot of, a lot of, uh, little things taking place up there as well. And if you remember, in the last few years, we've been putting some money into the building, into the grounds. It's made a big difference. I mean, I first came here, you went into the office up there, and, oh, it was a mess. The floor was a mess, the wall, and it just was old. It needed to be some money put into it, and thanks to the council, we were able to do that. And it's a lot nicer now, new floor, new siding and the, new, paneling on the inside, just getting it. In fact, one of the desks wasn't even a desk, it was some boards on top of some crates. Getting that taken care of as well, so. And again, it's, it's been, it's been nice to have that. Uh, there's some more, the more I could be done up there, but I think they'll have to wait over time, uh, get to it when we can. So, um, again, with the cemetery, one of the, a couple of things that we are looking at, like I said, the office in the area has been taken care of better. We fixed the roof, we fixed the siding. The area just inside where they park equipment is the next big tackle to get that straightened up and fix things up in there to wait these days. We have, uh, $2,000 set aside for that. If you drive through the cemetery, you look at the signs trying to find where you're going. They're all a bit hard to read. We want to get those updated and get some better signage to help direct people to where they can find their loved ones or find a section in there and some more information on, uh, do's and don'ts at the cemetery. Another item we're trying to do, started last year, all the water services in there. If you want to go in there and get some water, we've got a lot of taps all over. The shut-off valves, a lot of them weak. They need to be replaced, and they need to be replaced with a backfill preventer. So, we started working on that. We try to put about $1,000 into that every year, try to get as many of them done as we can. But there is a backfill preventer back where the water comes into the cemetery, at Professor Marty's house there. It's still, you want to make sure you're not exiting something active in the system, so we're working on that too.
Do, do we test that water in the spring when we open it up?
Yes, we do. We also test the water at the drinking pumps in the parks. And when we first turn them on, which is, we got, we got beautiful facility to do it in, and it takes three days. And, and it's just nothing else. It's peace of mind that the water coming out of this micket at that moment was as clean as it's supposed to be. Yeah, with the cemetery, like I said, the, uh, operating supplies and such, basically holding their own to what they've been. Any questions on something there? The next thing that I would have, uh, we have there, Department 441. That would be for, uh, public works.
Page 35.
Page 35.
Yeah, bottom 34, I'm sorry.
Now, a lot of talk about on 34 towards the start, so that's a great place to start. We want 35, and again, I'm not gonna go over all the personnel numbers because they're pretty consistently come from Sue Olin's office. When we get into the, uh, supplies and the actual contractual professional, a lot of that covers the building and the grounds around there. And then, to be honest with you, when we have, go out and do something, we're not sure where to charge it. It's got to do with public works, you know, put it to public works. Some of the things around the building that we need to have some work on. Uh, if you go around, uh, the perimeter of the building whenever it's raining, it'd be a lot of flooding going on. We want to try to get that taken care of by doing some grading and some, some sloping of the property. And then, uh, especially in the back where the, uh, where the, uh, materials all kind of sit, the grassy areas back there. Get it also that it slopes, the water can get away so that, as you move down to, uh, the capital end of it, we want to try to get some asphalt put down on that parking lot. The front is really falling apart, especially for the vehicles that come in and turn to go around to the side. And then in the back, it's been falling apart for a long time. We've been just, we'll patch every now and then, we'll try to fix something back there. We just want to take it, so if you get the drainage right, get the asphalt down, and we can, uh, stop it from falling apart. We'll start at the front, we have extra, we'll do the back. We'll start with the front, we have extra.
I don't know if it has any value to you, but Shannon's working on his parking lot too. So, I don't know if it could be a, one project, save a little bit of money. But it might be worth reaching out across the driveway a little.
Dan, because you have such limited parking there too, is there someplace that you could add a couple of parking spots? Because I know when I came and visited you last time, it was full, you don't want to park in front of the doors, there's no parking, so try to be conscious of where you are.
When I first started, I was all about parking out.
Yes.
And then we got two other, um, Cody and Dave from Water Park out there, because I always say park where we're at. Or everyone's parked in the back, and it gets kind of crowded.
Yeah.
So, it's just, it just work on the ones that are there. I, I think if we can get, here, you're saying, I think if we can get the pavement fixed, we can put some signage up, put some, uh, parking, because I know we say to park in front of the doors, and they've got a handicap spot, but there is other parking that we could put in there that will work, and then, except we get something around the back, a little more space for the guys back there with David and Collier, tell them to park over those, uh, fire bar and walk to you. Rainy days, it's going to work for you.
I, I, I won't be there.
And, 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 no, actually, come see me, see my car, just park in front of me, I can't leave.
That's true.
You promise not to park there after August?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll park in the handicaps a lot. Wait for, please, wait for him to come get it, but. Yeah, we're, uh, I thank the, uh, DPW building, the guys do, I think, a really good job taking care of things, putting stuff away. I gotta say, this is the, probably the first place I work where we have our toolbox sitting out full of tools. The guys come in to have to fix something, they take the tools, fix something, go fix, and they bring them back and they put them away. I owe the guys a ton of credit on that. And we don't have to go into the vehicles and try to find, uh, wrenches and screwdrivers and everything. They put everything away, they take care, they clean, it's probably the cleanest public works buildings I've been in as well. The guys take care of it, they take care of their equipment, they, they, I, I, I'm very happy with, with the guys and how they, they do that. Take care of what's been allowed for them to utilize in their jobs, so. Any questions on DPW? We move on to, uh, Chamber River Walk. We just have a few dollars we put towards that to take care of the, the, the building and facilities down there. Uh, we tried to put something under the building improvements into the bathroom building for maintenance. Being it's new, we still have some, some tweaks we're doing to it. I believe we put, we put camera on the inside because we're finding issues with, uh, a little vandalism going on in there. Not, not cameras in the bathrooms, but in the hallways, so we see what's going in there. And then, when, when the sink falls apart, what's, what they're finding is the, the trap or hit the sink, some of these loosening along, so when you turn the water on, it would go on there, crazy stupid things, so. But overall, I think the, uh, the facility down there is, uh, working out well. I just know with a few minor little things that we'll come up with it, so.
Since we want to use, uh, a lot of people use it, so.
Yep, yep. And I'm pleased with how that turned out too. And, and because of that going in there, the guys cleaning up down there as well, we've gotten a little bit more room down through there, and that's worked out pretty nice. And will be, uh, the north part of the building, the little sand area, is still pretty much vacant. We got all our stuff on there. And then where the workshop shop, sign shop is, cleaned that up while that was going on, got rid of a lot of stuff we didn't need, I think filled up a dumpster doing our stuff, and, and, uh, Liz's stuff on her building, it made a huge difference out there. Turned out well, um, so that's, that's for down there. Uh, parks, uh, move on into that, our, our parks. We've been trying to put in, I, I'll say this about Jeff and Darren, who are the public works guys, take care of the parks as well. Their, their idea is to fix things up the way they should be and take care of them. They've been, not, not, not to say the people prior, didn't do that, people prior, uh, Scott and Joe and those guys, they had a different, uh, different mindset on things to do, because they had a lot of potholes to patch, and they had a lot of things to take care of out in the streets. We're getting those fixed, it's given us time to spend on taking care of our facilities that we have. So they do spend some time down there. This past winter, they've been working on the bathrooms. Usually we get there, this time of year, we've got a lot of work to do to them. They did it in the fall, took care of the floors and the walls, and, and got some plumbing well taken care of. I think this year, we had the water on, soon as baseball started, within a few days of baseball starting, the weather helped, because it wasn't below freezing for a length of time. Uh, with, uh, with Creekside, the problem we have there is the piping into the bathroom buildings on the exterior walls. So, if it's cold, brick walls, it's cold, freezes, and we have a mess. That's why you can't hardly turn it on too early. A lot of these years, we're going to have to do something with that building, insulate it better and such, but they've been working on getting that stuff taken care of, been working on the, the ballfields down here at Rec Park. They, they've been doing a lot. Today was the first day our contracted, uh, grass cutter was out cutting, mowing the lawns down at Rec Park and DPW. And I think, uh, if Darren and Jeff could have grabbed a hold of them, they better would have run their necks, because we're trying to stop them from, just running over the trash. We're trying to stop them from, from running over the same things all the time. So, take some time, take some pride, leave it up, we hired you to do that, it's in the contract. So, I, Jeff texted them, said, "Look at your contract, bear good out contractor, and your mower picking up." And sit there, if there's a lot of trash, call us, we'll go down, help pick it up, just don't run it over, it's like, yeah. We don't, we don't like that, we want to make things look nice, and y'all know Jeff, he's a kicker at football, he's, he's got a little, little feelings for the park down there too, so. And with, and with, uh, uh, the youth fair leaving, we're going to have to look at things made a little differently now, what we want to do, how we want to do it, how we want to structure it between DPW and the parks board, try to figure out, and over the summer months, where to take that into next year, because at the end of this year, I believe the contract's up, and then we'll have to take care of that as far as rentals and works and stuff like that, so. But getting back to the, the maintenance end of the parks, again, it's, we just try to hold our own. We know a lot of things that need to be done, and we're doing them. Again, the guys are pretty creative with how they do stuff too, with, uh, with things out there. Uh, we do have about five thousand put aside for Creekside restroom repairs. As I said, they started it in the fall, uh, replaced some sinks and some faucets, get them more, uh, user friendly. Faucets that they had in there, for the time they were put in, were probably state of the art, they'd fallen behind, and we're working on them all the time. So, we got a pretty good deal on some sinks this year, some faucets. But we also want to take care of the floor one time, one time more, so they, they don't have to paint it every year, so we're working on that. Um, under the capital end of it, uh, the, the bleachers at the football, at Birch Field, are really owned by the fair. The ones that are used down there for the, on the, on the visitor's side. So, they're going to take those with them, we were told, so we're going to have to replace those, so that's where you see, uh, fifteen thousand in there for some bleachers for that side. This year, we started working on the lights on the softball field and the, uh, football field, and, uh, to finish them off, to make them all LED, make them all up to date, is a twenty-five thousand dollars, so we budgeted twelve thousand five hundred for that, and we'll be sleeping the grant for the rest of it, so that, uh, sometime during next year, we become finished up, so we have the lighting fixed up again. And something to keep in mind, I know last year, maybe the year before, had some, some interest from outside people that wanted to use the football field for a women's football league. We've got some schools that don't have the football field that wanted, were considering coming to the law. So, we get the field in good shape, it might be a revenue source for the community to put the field back into service again, for, uh, for more than just the, the youth football.
Do the fair people come down with you and guys and decide what buildings are?
I've met with them, basically, the, all the barns are theirs. The, the only building I'm still up near on, I'm saying, and I, I read that it's ours, I read it's not, is their office building in that barn that's connected to it. That's only, that's the only, um, facility down there that really is questionable. The, no, the, the animal barns and those, those are pretty, everything I've read, those are theirs. Um, the Foreman Building, of course, is ours, and the King Building. And all the, uh, little buildings that have to do with the football field are ours. But when it comes to the rest of them, though, it's, we have the, uh, concession building that the Nets of Columbus built, uh, I think there's something that talks about when, after so many years, it's, it looks to be fair, so I'd have to find those forms again. And then the, it's just that, that office something, some say the office is ours, and some say it's theirs, so. I think it's going to probably be a discussion that the board and the council probably will own.
That, that one's not even relocated though, is it? What's the one?
Well, I don't understand why they would take them anyway. You're paying a contractor twice, you're tearing them, paying them to tear down.
I think, I think their intention is to, um, pay a contractor to tear them, how to sell to this barn or wood and stuff like that. I don't think their intentions are to reconstruct them.
It's still expensive.
I think if the council is interested in keeping those buildings, taking them on, I think a discussion with them might be prudent to find out how much they really, really want to deal with them, or just leave them behind, like the city deal with them as they.
Could have sworn that Kaiser's building, or forty-two, the Knights of Columbus building, it could have sworn that was ours.
Well, can you find that right paperwork, I'd love to see. Just, it's hard to find the finalized paperwork. Now, I, my thinking is, it was, you know, we're thinking about massed areas and whatever thing took place, like, "Yeah, we're just going to build this," and knowing what Nets of Columbus said, I've already got what they're like. They're like, "We got everybody here, we all, so let's just go." And by the time it gets done, it's like, "Well, it's done." And I don't think, I know Sue and I looked over all around for, for records on it, and weren't able to find anything, so. I just, well, sometimes we get a bunch of people together to have a, a plan, and they go to town and get the plan done, because it's for the youth of the community, so, the area, so.
Well, that was going to fight for, overall, than anybody who knew anything about the history of the fair anyway.
But if, if they want to take them, won't we?
Take them.
Take them, save us money. Because something you can think about, you get those old buildings out of there, and concrete or dirt or whatever's under there, get a nice, uh, nice turf field going down there, you have some more room for, for these, uh, youth sports groups, that are looking for more soccer areas, more ball, lacrosse areas, more football areas. And, uh, it'll open up a lot of space, yeah. That's just going on in our parks for this coming year. I think, I think people keep an eye out on parks that are looking like, I think they should be, these things are looking pretty good. Showboat area, if you ask some questions on that, we have some miscellaneous, uh, uh, repair and maintenance work. One thing we want to do, I talked to Joe about it, we want to put like a river boom, if you will, on those pipe or tubes that flow on the top of the water, on the front side of the boat, from the seawall to just past the nose of the boat. It'll sit down, you'll, you'll see it, but it won't be, uh, just too intrusive. The idea is to keep the debris that's floating down the river, to go between the boat and the seawall. And I think that should, that should work pretty well, so, just hope it's floating by, for most of it to stay out of there. So, would you spend two hours on there?
I'd spend about an hour and a half, two hours one day, and it was just perfect when I left next morning, I came down there. It was all, yeah, all it takes is one small branch, or us partial log, get between that, and it just, thanks. Because there is enough current that if it was open, it would flow past the boat and come on the backside.
So, the idea is if we have that boom to keep it out, we might have to go out to the boom and move stuff to the, to the, so easier not, where we're not going along beside the boat, the seawalls. That's what that, uh, point happened there for Showboat is. Uh, for the library this coming year, uh, one thing for, uh, building improvements is, uh, the outside lighting all around the building is, uh, is in different, uh, ends of repair. Some work, some doesn't, some. But I upgrade that for the safety reasons around the building to LEDs, and get that so it's, it's, uh, more visible if you will, around the building. That's, otherwise, the work we do at the library is minimal to what mostly they call us, say, "We've got a problem going over there." Kurt, uh, what's Kurt's last name?
Lardy.
Kurt Lardy, running the library out, excellent person, he's so nice to work with, and the guys don't mind going, if he calls, they don't mind going over there and trying to help him out, and, and, like, that's, that's part of our job, and help everybody out, and that's, that's one, it's our facility, so the guys are quick to go over and help them. And Kurt and his staff have been pretty good to work with, so. I think it was, it's, it's been a good addition over there, somebody that we can, uh, get along with really well, not say we can get along, Sandy, she's, uh, but I think she wasn't there all the time either. Um, that's, uh, the museum, again, is just, uh, we don't have any capital for the museum for this coming year. Working on the steps, have a little, little slowdown on the steps and getting materials and getting some inspection work done, so that's why you see the hole there. It's not that they don't want, they, they did say when they started, it could get to this point, and just, and that's what we're having.
Looks like they got forms of, so did they pour their footers?
I'm not sure if they poured yet or not. They were going to, and then, like I said, they, they're working on that, I talked to them Thursday last, so. That's what I have for general fund items. The, uh, next item on, on the list would be streets. It's page forty-two. Trying to, uh, stay ahead of the game with our projects on our capital outlay. We're looking at getting started on the design work for Foreman, that's, uh, that's, what, two years out?
Yes.
And we want to get working on that. Uh, something to think about with Foreman, um, it's pretty rough, needs some work. The street found out with our, with our little work that we did a couple of years ago with all the underground, uh, cable lines that were put in, is the road itself sits far pushed towards the west right-of-way line. The right-of-way of the lot of Foreman is down to the river's edge. And, uh, it's, uh, probably sure they marked it out, they didn't realize that as much as it was. It's, uh, it's, the sidewalk, where the sidewalk sits for most of the area, except the last block, is, uh, basically where the right-of-way line is, the backside of the sidewalk. When you get up to that last block from Foreman to Hunt, the sidewalk jogs away from the road. Well, that's all up front, probably, we found out. And it angles through there. So, when they go to do Foreman Street, that's something they're going to have to keep in mind when they're doing that work. And that, that last block from Foreman to Hunt, there is no water main on that stretch. Those houses that are through there, their water comes off of Hudson Street, through the neighbors' backyards, over to their houses. What we're supposed to do, well, on the top of the mark. And then as Hunt Street turns north and goes out of town, there's a dead-end water main right there. That water main goes up to the city limits, over to Hudson and back, and the idea is to take off from that hydrant that's there, run it down to Foreman, finish that looplog, and then put some, uh, service connections for the houses, so that if the day comes they have an issue with their line going through the back, they'll have a new line in the area in the front to, to tap into the water main without having to get out into the street. So, that, that should all be part of it, talk with the engineers and with the staff on that, and understand the reason why we should be doing that. So, that'll be getting started, and then Washington Street, uh, we started the design on that two years ago now, so this is just a continuous. When it comes to street work, we, we kind of try to hold our own. The biggest, the biggest unknown for street work is winter maintenance. We know what it is going to be like. I think, I think the way we go about budgeting for winter, trying to keep, you know, what's average, I think we sit pretty good. Um, this, this year's, we are sitting really good with our salt, um, from what's left of this year that we carry over into next, so that, uh, we should start the year off with a good supply. Typically, within the next month or so, we should be getting notice, because from the salt suppliers in the county, of, uh, getting ready to order for next year, that says winter's over, we order for next year. State purchasing does it in March for next year, so it's, how much you order. So, you basically order what's the, been average. I think this coming year, we can probably not have to order early felt, because we've got.